8:15 on Thursday, July 18th. I welcome everyone to the Summer Retreat of the Jordan School District Board of Education. With us today is our newly appointed superintendent, Dr. Anthony Godfrey.
Official.
Very young.
Dr. Yurfdog, I came to know recently.
That's right.
All seven board members are here, as well as John Larson, and we'd like to thank Vicki Olson, who is ever faithful in attending our meetings, the president of JEA. We're gathered here mostly, this, today is mostly strategy. We won't make any agenda, we won't make any decisions, the agenda is kind of loose. The idea here is big picture, where are we, where we're going, strategy. Not so much tactics. I love to play chess, and when to win at chess, you have to have a strategy and tactics. Not too long ago, I lost my, threw my queen. I deliberately lost my queen, which is the most powerful position, the most powerful piece in the game, which is a horrible tactical move, unless it plays into a strategy, which it did, and I ended up winning because of it. So today is more about not the details, not the how-tos, more the whys, the whats, the what-ifs, the wheres. So let's start with us. Let's take a look at our, you know, how we get, how we function. Then tell me about how you feel we are doing as a group. What do we do well? What do we need to improve? Best thing we do, and maybe the thing we need to change? Can we just go one around the table, one at a time?
I'll start.
Janice.
I think one thing that, I was thinking about this this morning, one thing that we are getting much better at is melding, working more unanimously toward a common goal, which I think is the whole point. So I think that's great. Things we do worse at, I'm sorry, it's too early in the morning to think of that, I have to be angry. But I think the fact that we're making an effort to, and being more considerate of each other in our different attitudes, and I think that's really important.
Good. Jen?
I'm still thinking about that.
Matt, you ready to go?
No.
Anthony?
I like the level of clarity that we have. It's something that you have to keep working on, because we have so many varied things come our way. But I like the clarity that we have achieved, and that we continue to seek, where this is the board's project, this is the administration's project. That's really helpful, and this is where they intersect, and this is how we help each other. And I think the thing that we always have to improve on is making sure that our public message is unified. That's my first reaction.
Good. Daryl?
I think what we've done good is we've made some bold moves that's moved us in the front of the state's educational community. And maybe what we need to change, work on, is maybe understanding each of our unique perspectives, and, you know, how they look at us.
We'll get into that.
I will say, like, the truth in taxation open house, I heard a lot of people commusing about the board and some of the things, and I saw, I heard that also as a business of schools in the middle of the year. So there is a high level of trust of the board.
Tracy?
I, I think, I agree with Janice, I think we've really, you know, as a group, kind of really could synergize and hold good ideas out, and, and I think we've done some great things as a board, and like Daryl said, made some bold moves that we've been able to come together on. The thing we need to work on still is communication with the public. It's just, I don't know if we'll ever win that battle, but there's some misperceptions out there, and I think we have more to do.
Good. Marilyn?
Yeah, kind of the same. I think after two and a half years, I think we've finally arrived at knowing each other's personality and perspectives to a certain point. I think we are better listeners at this point of the game. I think we are open-minded, we're not focused just on our own agenda, and I think that's good. I think the thing that we need to improve on, and I heard this a lot at the open house the other night, was that the mixed messages that are out there, and the wrong messages, the inaccurate information. And so I feel like, and I don't know how we do it, like Tracy, I don't know how we go about making sure the right communication and the right information gets out there. I think that needs to be our focus this year.
Jen, you ready to go?
Yeah. So I just, I reflect upon the whole year that we've had, and we've had a really big year. And I think, say, we have done it pretty well. With, with all of the obstacles that have been in this past year, I think we've done it pretty well. There are times where I do feel that the board is divided, and I'd like to see more of a unity. But I think the thing that we need to work on most is just the communication. But that's so difficult, because perception is perception, right? And one person hears the message one way, and it gets heard another way by the person sitting next to them. I realized a lot at the last open house was that we are trying so hard to send this positive message, but the perception of each individual can be so different. And that's really hard. That's a hard, it's a hard battle to fight, but I think that we can always continue to improve on that.
Matt?
I, I really don't have anything else that hasn't been talked about.
I, I love the fact that I think we've identified each person's unique brain, and there's always a moment where we, we turn to that person as kind of the, you have a perspective that we don't have, and I think we've learned to appreciate that. If it's a financial issue, my, I turned them at. If it's a history of Jordan School District, we've got two people who've lived it, three people who've lived it. And I love that we can say, when you were teaching, what was that like? When you were an administrator, what was that like? And we have the perspective of parents, and I think we do that well. One of the things that we need to do is figure out who each one of us is and how we fit. I am a unique individual, and I've learned to recognize that when I was the principal at Riverton Seminary. Every time we'd have a whole crop of new, you know, there's turnover every summer, and I'd have two or three new to the faculty, and one of the first things we would do, and Daryl can tell you this, the first thing we would do is we'd have a, "How do we work with each other?" lesson. And I would say, "Look, let me tell you about me. Let me tell you what makes me easy to work with and hard to work with, and what you're gonna, the challenges you're gonna face," and, and I would, and we would just kind of talk openly and say, "Here's what you need to know about me as the principal, my personality."
We did it in a bar.
And we did it in a bar. And I would just simply say, "Look, if you walk in, you need to understand that I'm gonna have thought through every, you bring an issue to us, I'm gonna have thought through it deeply, and I'm gonna have come to a conclusion what I think is best, and I'm not trying to sway you, it's just that I've thought through. So when you come in, I need you to stand toe-toe to me, I need you to hold firm to what you think is different, because I'm gonna tell you all the logical reasons I think we should do this." People who took that lesson seriously and listened and said, "Oh, that's how he is," we began to work better together. So we've asked each one of you to take a personality test, not that it's the best one, there's lots out there, we're not necessarily trying to sell the personality test, but I'm hoping that personality test taught you something about you. If you noticed at the very end, there were, here's what motivates you, here are your strengths, here are your weaknesses, here's what people need to know when they work with you. So let's just go around the table and just say, just take a few minutes and say, "Okay, here's me, here's who I am, here's what the personality test said I am, here's what I've observed about me, here's what you need to know about working with me." If you'll go to that, I was fascinated with that page in the back. Communication Insights for Others. Communication Insights for Others says, "Things to do effectively, you know, things to do to effectively communicate with Bryce," colon.
Do you know what page that was?
In mine, it's...
Like nineteen, I think.
Yeah. It's the one right before the blanks, the relevant section. It's the last of the, but things to avoid to effectively communicate with Bryce are. So let's just, give us a little insight into you, how you tick, how you operate. I would guess that most of us are not gonna be surprised. We know you well enough to say, "Yep, that's you." But I thought this tool was very good at simply saying, "Here's what other people need to know in communicating with you. When they walk, when they communicate with you, here's some things that they'll do that will make it a better exchange, and here's some things." So, anyone wanna go first? Matt, you've had the most time with it, would you mind kind of sending the stage and saying, I know you've been, you did this at work, so just, you start us off, if that's okay?
So, so I am an equally high S and a C. I scored ninety-nine on my S, and I scored ninety-nine on my C. And, and then in my adaptive style, I scored almost as equally as high in my C category as I did in my natural style. And so of the two, I, when I'm in, on display, I revert even further to that, that C, that cautious. So the preferences are for standards and protocols, for procedures, I value those, those things, and, and at the same time, value stability, and pacing, and, and slow and steady. And, and so some of the communication, is the, you know, I'm, I'm how, I'm a how-to-oriented person. I love, break the ice with brief, personal comments. I, and I know exactly what that's talking about. I do value, I do like engaging briefly into the personal, but I'm ready to get into the detail and the process. The one that, it talks about making organized appeal for support and contributions, and use thoughtful and logical approaches to discussing ideas and options. And I want, it says, "Approach issues in straightforward, direct, factual way, and give time to ver," it says, "Provide time to verify issues and potential outcomes." And so if you, if you reflect, a lot of these, if you reflect the dialogue in which, I mean, I have, I mean, those, those are the things that I value in a communication style. And, and so, yeah, I don't know, that's, that's good.
But what I'd love to do is give time to everyone else, and just simply say, "How have, how has working with Matt been confirmed in that, how does that jive with what you've learned about Matt?" I'll go first, because one of the first things I learned about Matt, and really did set a tone for the, the finance committee, is I just said, "You know what? Matt's hot button is to be blindsided. You wanna get Matt upset, throw something at it, that we have to have a decision right now, you gotta get through this information really quickly, and if you blindside Matt, it's just not gonna go well." And so as a finance committee, we just said, "How do we avoid blindsides? How can we start avoiding blindsides?" So we set together a perpetual calendar, and we just simply said, "Look, how do we as a board make sure," and Matt wasn't the only one, but that was a significant piece of information that said, "When you work with Matt, you need to know that he needs time to process. And he needs the facts, and he needs it devoid of emotion and sentiment, and this is the reality." And it's been fascinating as executive committee, Matt will initially say, "Well, I didn't think that," or "I don't think that's a good idea," until, "Well, here's why." And I've watched Tracy say, "Well, here's why I," "Oh, okay, that's right." And just present the logical argument, and then allow time to process. And that's very much I appreciated working with Matt. But the thing I love about that is that process will continue for many, many days, and then he'll come back and say, "I have really thought this through, and here's my conclusion." Like this morning, I hit Matt with a question he wasn't prepared to answer, "No, I don't have anything to offer." And that's very much what I appreciate working with Matt. Any other comment, anything else you want us to add about what you've learned about working with Matt?
Is your adaptive style different from your natural?
So the adaptive is, is strong C. What's interesting is my, my D, my decisiveness decreases when I'm on display, when I'm in that adaptive style. And, and, you know, my I, my interactivity, is the lowest in my natural style, and it actually goes up a little higher in my adaptive style. And so I recognize the need to be a little more. But then, but my C dominates in the adaptive style, is valuing that process, that procedure, and, and going through that. And, and so, and I think if you, if you reflect on the dialogue that I have in our public meetings with staff, and with, those are the things that I value and, and respond to, if people are, are prepared and procedural, and, and, and methodical in their, in their approaches, and just...
That's very much Matt Young. We're buying lawnmowers. Have you looked at all the options? Are you making a calculated, cautious decision? That, that's what I got.
So you don't buy the pretty one, huh?
I don't, and, and I don't respond to, "Well, we did the best that we could." That's not giving me the information that, that I need to be able to feel good about things. I, I need to hear, "Yeah, we evaluate these things at this process, at this time, and, and have that information." I don't, I don't even need to know what the conclusions were, as much as I just need to know that there's something there. And that's, that's very much.
Very insightful.
Something tangible.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, because what I, I really do get is his strong points. So it really helps to be a better team. You know, if we were all like Matt, I think we would not be a great team.
We'd still be processing information.
That's good to realize, because that's where we're gonna, that's where this is gonna happen, because Matt's gonna say, "Wait a minute, we gotta slow down," and someone else may say, "No, we've gotta make a decision."
Because we all want, I think we want a board just like us, but it really wouldn't be a good board if we were all the same.
So Matt, walking into a restaurant for the first time, tell me what goes through your head.
Oh my gosh. People, I, my friends know I will be the last to order. I review the entire menu. I will, I will inevitably ask the waiter what their, what their choices are, and, and then I will listen as everybody else orders, and, and then I, and I've, and procedurally, I've narrowed it down to, okay, and inevitably, there is always one or two choices that I'm waiting to the last. Yeah. Yeah. And that's a great, that's a, that's a great question, because, and my friends absolutely know that, and the funny thing is, when we get with my family, there's two or three of us who go last. So that's always...
They're just last out of the three. Pushing.
Exactly. So, great question, Bryce, that's a great question.
Okay, anything else? Any insights you gained? Anything else you wanna ask or say about working with Matt? That is valuable information to know, that we need, especially for staff, that's gonna be very important for staff, and you two have seen that, when bids come in, there's been a constant request for, can you make sure that this is seen, we need to see the carefulness, the cautiousness in the decision. That's great insight. All right, anyone wanna go next? Marilyn, you wanna go next?
Yes, I will.
Okay, let's hear it. Show us your, show us your chart. Let us digest it for a minute. Okay.
Okay, so as you can see, under C, I was finally in ninety-nine percentile in something. Of course, that was my natural style, and, and it's very true. It's very true, I think. My adaptive style is quite low in that area, so it's out of my comfort zone, way out of my comfort zone. Some of the things on the last page that, things to do to effectively communicate with me is to do some, what should I call it? Just human connection. That's important to me. Plan some extra time in your schedule for talking, relating, and socializing. That, that's important to me, to make connections.
Look how high her I is.
Can everyone hold up their charts just for a second? Let's compare your I with her I, because I would dare say Marilyn has the highest I.
Oh no.
Oh wow, look at Anthony.
Oh, yours is really high though, right? Oh, Janice's is really high.
Janice's is.
And that seems very, very typical. Definitely. I mean, this is the one who quilts us something, and brings birthday gifts, and that, and that human element is critical.
On my I and my S, my natural and my adaptive were quite comparable, but on that last one, that C, that was way out of act. So you know that I, I'm going out of my comfort zone on a lot of things, because I like the human element. Things to do to effectively communicate with me, like I just said, plan some extra time to talk and relate and make connections. That's important to me. Also, I like accurate information, that's important. Use a thoughtful and logical approach to discuss ideas and options. Okay, so take time, be thoughtful. Things to avoid to effectively communicate with me, don't be short-tempered, cold, or tight-lipped. Okay? Don't use unreliable evidence or testimonials, don't be dogmatic, don't fail to follow through, don't talk down to anyone, avoid being impersonal, judgmental, so that whole human thing is coming through here. Can you see it? There's a pattern. And, and that's me. That really is me, so.
Very true.
My D is actually quite low, so I was surprised by that. Makes sense.
But as I've walked, an issue will come up, and you will always ask, "What's the human element here?" Like the whole Jordan Ridge permit thing. You see the people. It's not a decision, it's people. And so that's why I think that decisiveness is, I don't care about the black and white of the decision, I gotta see the people.
Right, and it's not that I'm wishy-washy by any means.
No.
I'm not. I do, I, the human element is very important.
That's so Marilyn, her church.
Very true.
Thoughts about working with Marilyn? How have you seen that confirmed with your relationship with her?
Marilyn does her homework.
I would imagine Marilyn never, Marilyn is the mom whose kids would wait in the foyer forever, because mom never leaves church. Like, "Mom, let's go home," because she's just talking to the next person, the next person. But everyone wants to talk to Marilyn.
Well, she makes everybody feel important.
She brought treats for the morning. I mean, it's just such a Marilyn thing to do. She looks out for the human element. I think that's so interesting, in knowing that, that when we talk about a decision, we better get into the who is going to be affected by this, how are they gonna feel about it, or else Marilyn's gonna have a hard time making a decision.
True.
That's fascinating. It's just amazing how accurate those two have been in yours. Any other thoughts about Marilyn? Tracy?
She, because of that human element, she really listens to everybody else, and hears what everybody else is saying, too, and weighs it all when she makes decisions.
And that's been, I remember when we were talking about whether or not we give the Alps siblings a pass. Matt and I had pretty much made a decision, thinking, looking at the decision, and then all of a sudden, we could see something was, and all of it, I remember, Matt and I both looked at you and said, "Marilyn, you be careful what you're about to say, 'cause you're gonna sway our decision." And I think that was so typical of you. It's like, "I have thought through the human element of this, I'm willing to take this one, and here's the decision." And I think the board is starting to recognize that personality and respect that. That's fascinating.
That's me.
Any other comments or thoughts? All right, Tracy, should we just go around? You ready to go? I know you're a little jet lagged. Did you have a chance to take it in time to digest it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am.
Hold up your thing, let's see. Let's see if we can guess. Okay, any guesses on what will be her high? D, I, S, or C?
I'm going high S.
That's what I think.
And that's what I think, too.
All right, let's see then.
So, Matt, I have to win. High S and high C, ninety-nine, ninety-nine.
Wow.
And I was, I was surprised that my I was so low. And maybe it's because I was jet lagged when I was taking it, I don't know. But I, but I think, I mean, I think the reason it's, it's low is just because the others were higher than it. But I, I really value data, procedure, I mean, my mind is so structured and so logical, that's how I approach things.
What type of questions do Tracy ask more than any other questions? Can we get more information? I need more information, all the time.
Yeah. But the reason I was surprised that the I was low, though, is because the way I get information and come to conclusions is by listening, and listening. And you've all got calls from me. I, the way I like, I process things out loud, and I just have to talk through it all. And I haven't, you know, sometimes when I'm asking a question, my questions really are questions... And I haven't, you know, sometimes when I'm asking a question, my questions really are questions I'm not meeting anybody anywhere. That's been one of the hardest things in our marriage. I'll ask you a question and I have some things that I'm, just because I have an opinion. My questions weave in that way. My questions are really.
Fact-finding, yeah.
Because I need to talk it out. I haven't come up with any decisions yet. I'm just talking through this. So I have to, you know, I was reminded here. I'm talking this out until I have a meeting decision. Um, so that's why, you know, I thought the interactive would be a little higher because my need to talk this out. Um, but the other ones, I think, were just higher than it. But, you know, a couple of things on this that really describe the face the more I'm necessary. And comparing your face, you're the unexpected, you're being seen, and underpaid. Studies have been made to figure out what it is. I wanna know when I come out. I'm not good. So I do, yeah, kind of homework. I really like to go deep into the details. Like information.
And time, time to process.
And time to process it, yeah. My, my D is low. I'm not decisive. Cause I like, I like to process things. And that's actually, you know, to a fault, cause I overprocess. And which makes it harder to come to a decision. You have so much information. It's harder to visualize. It's true.
Thoughts on Tracy? Thoughts on working with Tracy?
Tracy, in terms of personality, the balance of all of us. Because she interacts well on a personal level. But she also, um, has a complex intellectual level. So it's a combination, I think, with all of us. The rest of us are on one side or the other, petered out.
I am not surprised that her S is so high. Simply because Tracy is really the hub. She's kinda that. She makes sure that the conversation goes both sides. And I very much have appreciated, when we start tipping this direction, she's always the one that says, well, let's tip back this direction. And it's just that high, stable heap of perspective. She's one of our quieter board members. Because I think she's processing. And she's not just gonna step up and... I've, when we were doing the superintendent search, she did all the homework. But there were times when I wanna make sure that we're doing this right, that this is balanced. And I just think that's one of her greatest strengths. It's just that keep everyone together. She's, she's that, she, I can, I, I picture her in high school as the friend that everyone have. That they wouldn't do anything as a group unless Tracy were with them. Because everyone has a tie to her, but they don't necessarily have a tie to each other. And she's just that glue, that connection. So valuable part of our team.
Yeah.
Astute observation.
Yeah. Two things, um, that I appreciate, I, I appreciate a lot of things. But two specific things would be, um, I really depend on, maybe perhaps too much. I really depend on Tracy for detail. Same thing with Matt. I, I depend on them for detail because they do love to dig. They do love to have all that information at their head. So, you know, I depend on her for detail and certification. Those two things I really appreciate because she has the answers. And she can usually lead us in the right direction because of that.
She's read the policy. She went and tracked down which policy it was. And she's read through it and thought through it. Always comes prepared. That's done a huge thing. Other thoughts on Tracy?
You're right about your questions. You ask your question because you've already done the research. And that's just the next part that you need. It's never a loaded gun. It's always, I just need to know this next part.
Sometimes I'll even ask kinda the opposite of what I'm looking. Cause I just wanna hear the other side.
That's stabilizer. That's, I need to see that whole perspective. That's fascinating. Anyone else? Any other thoughts? Very accurate so far, wouldn't you say?
Yeah.
Daryl, you ready to go?
Sure.
All right.
I don't really believe it.
Oh, come on.
Okay, now, I would like to point out a little symbolism. The one person who's not sitting at the table is Daryl. And that's very much his personality. So this is gonna be very interesting. Daryl has always been a think-like-no-one-else-type person. And that brings a lot of things to the table. So I'll be fascinated to see this.
So I actually, um, decided to make this a family event. So I helped, helped them help me.
There you go.
We actually looked up words to say, am I that, am I not? So we spent a lot of time on it. More than the ten minutes of time.
Okay, show us your chart.
I don't agree with this, but.
Oh my gosh.
So I don't agree with anything that's said in here. And I've kinda studied it over, but it says about me, um, here's a couple things.
Are you surprised that Mr. Social Media?
He doesn't agree with it.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Are you, you're serious? You don't agree with what?
That's more evidence that it's right.
Mr. Social Media has a high I.
It's a truth, it's a law, let's just say that. You have a very high trust of others, which actually results in you being burned all the time. So that's happened to you throughout my whole life. Um, you seek freedom of speech and the ability to express ideas and opinions openly. I don't think that's.
How do you disagree with that? You couldn't have crafted a more accurate statement about you.
Uh, this is, this is totally, you suffer from a fair amount of procrastination when it comes to tasks that require you to do too much detail yourself. Randy Bogner turns a little thing for me that Daryl's greatest starting thing, not so good as finishing thing. I did finish my doctorate degree this week though, so.
Dang.
After how many years though?
Uh, almost a decade. So here's a couple other things that says, again, freedom of speech. Able to make decisions quickly. And you like to take credit or blame for the outcome of decisions. What were you gonna say?
No, I'll come back to it.
Um, easily to become restless, impatient with over-complex processing or slow-moving work. I don't think that's me at all.
Oh, that is so you.
Whatever. Everything is on the head.
Looking really.
Club policy. Let's start listing them.
Oh my gosh.
Look at this one. You lose interest in a project or initiative once the challenge is gone. You become impatient, especially with slow-thinking movers and slow-thinking people. Um, I, I don't know if this is true. I somewhat intimidate others due to my aggressiveness and dominance. And, uh, I'm not very sensitive to other people's needs. I'm a selective listener. I hear what I wanna hear. I was born with this. You prepare to be less structured and more, uh, have a more fleet, uh, free-flowing teaching style. You can be accused of leaving.
Someone once said in a board meeting, I don't care what the policy says.
It's true. Um, you can, you can be accused of leaving without too many details or specifics. You tend to experience, uh, those, you tend to expect those who teach to move as quickly as you do. You're quick to anger and respond to frustration. Um, I don't know. I, I don't like to stick rigidly to an agenda. Um, I don't like people who are tight-lipped. Um, I hate, I, I avoid.
Now, go back to that one. Go back to that one. I don't like people who are tight-lipped, meaning you want them to speak.
Good job. Say, say what you're.
Even if they disagree with you.
Yeah, don't come to me with a ready-made decision unless you're really gonna accept changes. Like, don't tell me something. Like, I know a lot of guys, um, that will tell me they just listen, let it roll off their back, and then they'll do whatever they want. That's not me. If I say I'll do something, I'll do it. I expect you to do it. So, there's where I am. That's me. I don't know if these things are really true.
So are you being facetious?
A little bit.
Okay.
Just a little bit though?
Well, I hate them 'cause like, they really are. It does seem a lot more extrovert than I see myself. But I see myself more as an introvert. Like, I struggle in social environments that are, where I, with, I don't know people. But once I know people, you know.
Well, but, but remember what that says. It's, it's not extrovert-introvert. It's interactive.
Interactive, yeah.
And, and I see very much that you, you have to be engaging. It, it may be in, in the terms in which you define, but, but you're constantly in interacting with people.
And you're the one that's always gonna say, well, let's go ask the public. Let's go talk to the public. Let's go get their opinion. Let's bring the swim team in. Let's, let's interact with the communities who are making decisions.
So I think what happens is I do that so much that it exhausts me. So then sometimes I'm just quiet and I say nothing. And people take that as I'm mad. You know, and so, and I'm not. I just, I'm tired of engaging. You know, so, you know.
With you?
So that's the introvert part of you though.
Yeah, I think.
Is because you just get so exhausted that you just have to take that type for yourself. But the thing is, is I think you see yourself more as an introvert. But when you're socializing with other people, people don't feel that you're an introvert.
That's what my wife says.
And I think that that's almost like, I don't know, coverup is the word for it. I'm looking for a specific word. It's your way of coping.
Yeah.
It's your way of coping with feeling that you're an introvert. So you really are pushing yourself out. And people see that you're an extrovert.
Well, and all the jobs and stuff I've ever done in my life are all extroverial jobs. So it's really hard to be a teacher and be very introverted.
And I can tell you what kinda teacher Daryl is. He's the kinda teacher that can't stand, if you expect me to talk the whole time, don't come to my class. Because if you're gonna come to my class, you are going to engage. And almost to the fault of students who don't wanna engage, no, you will. You will engage in my class.
So they don't wanna be in there.
And if you don't wanna engage, they, they're miserable in, in, in his class. And I would get phone calls from parents saying, my child wants to just sit there and be quiet. And this brother Robinson won't let, let him. And that taught me a lot about him. And, and what, and how to make him check. And so he needs to be involved in the decision-making process. He needs to, I mean, you've all noticed that Daryl, if, if the topic doesn't interest him, he'll just sit quiet. But all of a sudden, you hit a topic, and then it's high engagement. That's high energy. And then let me rest from my high energy with the, the topics that don't really engage me. And that's Daryl. He comes with, he comes with an idea, lays it on the table, and then walks away. In a positive way. He's an idea generator. Doesn't necessarily wanna, all the details and how do we implement it and all of that. He's the idea generator. And he likes that. He likes the challenge. But it's like, I think that's very true that when the challenge is gone, I'm no longer interested in this. That's, all of those are positives, not negatives. Those are very, those are positive qualities.
Some people look at it as negative.
True. But I think that's a positive.
That's been a struggle of my life. Cause some people will look at this and they see that you're too threatened, you know. Whenever I tried to pull back, but then when I pulled back, then people think I'm mad or something. And so it's just what I was born, born with. It's who I am. And so it's hard to change. Like, you, it's hard to change out of one of these categories. It's hard to.
So what did your adaptive ones then show?
They're almost the same.
You are the same in public as you are in private.
Yeah, they were just slightly thunder, but.
Well, and sometimes our greatest strengths can be our greatest weaknesses too. So we just have to learn how to work on both sides.
Right, that's interesting.
I am who I am, just.
You know, Daryl, when I think of you, just randomly, what I see is a picture of you at parades, handing out candy to people and greeting from ear to ear. And I think that's who you are. You are electrically interested in people as long as you're in control. So you can walk away and you don't have to hand them the candy if you don't want to. But if you want to, you're all in. And, you know, I think that's, obviously, you know yourself.
And, and again, as I think we all understand, these personalities, they're not good, they're not bad. They are. And, and wherever we think we came from, we did come hardwired with a lot of this. And so, um, so it, it, it just is. And, and, and as you touched on earlier, the, the benefit to these things is if we can understand the, where each of us are coming from and understand the, the filters to which we process what we're receiving from different people, as we're able to eliminate those filters and biases, we're able to begin to, to see each of us as we are, as our strength. And not as, and so I think that while these are very difficult mirrors to be looking at because we all wish that we were something a little bit different and we can, but as we, as we recognize that it's, it's our filters that we need to be removing. I can't remove your filters, but I can certainly remove mine and say, okay, this is how he is. And so how, how, with how I am and how he is, how do we eliminate those and, and make something a positive? And so I don't see these as positive or negative, good, bad. It is who we are.
It is, they are, yeah.
You know, and I can count on Daryl for ideas. And he's got the big picture and the ideas. He doesn't have the steps on how to get there.
Yeah, I could, someone like me, someone like me could not accomplish anything without you, you people, right? And I learned that, I think, for the first time in my life when I had Bryce. Cause Bryce brought a lot of that out and like, he would trust what I had to say. But then he would say, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? Have you thought, of course, I wouldn't think about that. I don't really care about.
But I loved the idea.
Yeah, but it's still.
Daryl would come to me with an out-of-the-box idea. And I'd say, oh my gosh, that's a great idea. Now, here's some things we're gonna have to be careful of, but that's a great idea. And that was very much Daryl, is here's the out-of-the-box thinking.
And, and one of the things I'm learning is, and, and Daryl doesn't need to hear, okay, we need to go, he, we're at A, you want us at Z. Daryl doesn't need to know B, C, D, E, F. But he does need to continually be known that we're getting to Z, right? We, we are going to get to Z. Um, and as long as I, as long as, I feel like I've.
And I know that those need to happen.
Right. But, but if there's ever a second that, that, oh, we're not getting, you know, we're not getting to Z, that becomes where the issue is. Um, and that's what I'm learning is, okay, I've got to continually communicate. I, I wanna get us there too. You know, I, I wanna get to Z too. And, and what he's given to me is I'm, I'm gonna back off on the, the happening now. And so I, I appreciate that. That, that's what needs to be communicated. We're, we're gonna get there. You know, and we're, we're all seeing that.
A lot, I agree. And a lot of people will let all the letters between A and Z get in the way of even talking about A. Well, I don't have B through Y figured out, so we can't really talk about A till I have that figured out. But Daryl has an ability to talk about that without having to know everything else. He can embrace a, a new idea or explore one without having to know all of that. But a lot of people can't get past that.
But on the other hand, you can also see how that can be frustrating to people who need all those details to do.
Well, I think if you can bring to me like what B is, then all of a sudden, then I start working on B and A's okay now. We're past that. And, but I need to kinda say, oh, this is a step we need to take first. And I'm like, oh, then, you know, here's my ideas to get D and Z done.
The phone calls I get from Daryl is, we're at A, why can't we go to D? What's stopping us from going to D? Daryl, we gotta do this, this. Okay, okay, I see that. That's good to know. But those are the questions I get is, we're at A, why aren't we at D? And I appreciate that. Because he is kind of the pedal-to-the-metal kinda guy that says, we've gotta go. You know, we've got a lot of people who have it very calculated, very cautious, let's move slowly. And then we've got someone saying, but can we step it up a little bit? And that's who we are.
It's a good balance.
That's a good balance. That's a good balance. So, the one thing I have learned about Darryl is, he vigorously and emotionally will defend his position without it affecting the personal relationship. It's really weird, because he'll get mad at me over an issue that we're having, and then as soon as we resolve the issue, there's no personal vendetta, there's no-
Vent in the the art, in the relationship, but it's like, you you don't hate me because you were so mad at me?
I never harbor any hard feelings.
He never harbors the hard feelings.
The hard thing is, because of my style, some people harbor it against me.
And that's the thing that the the people that work with you need to know, is that in the heat of the discussion, when we're yelling at each other, as soon as this is resolved, it's done, in Darryl's mind. And there's no, I mean, we would have a heated exchange.
I was usually right.
And then we would resolve it. And then the next day, he was in my office chatting.
And you're like-
And I'm like, "You're, do you remember yesterday? We were yelling at each other." And here he is, "Hey, you wanna go get a soda?"
I'll buy it.
And absolutely no vendetta, no harbor any feelings, and it's like, I had to realize that that's how he processes, so that regardless of how he came at me, when we're done, we're done, and we're friends again. And it'll never, ever be an issue from him to me, so it shouldn't be an issue from me to him. And so, that's the one thing I would say to the people that work with Darryl, is, after the heat of the exchange, and that's how he processes, like it or not, that's how Darryl processes, he'll say something, immediately see it's a dumb idea, that he didn't know was a dumb idea until he said it. And but because he said it, everyone's looking at him like, "You're an idiot."
A dumb idea, why would you-
Why would you think that was a dumb, you know, why would you suggest that? And then he would say, "No, I can see that," but that's how Darryl processes, by talking and suggesting and 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 working it out, and so, of all the six board members I interact with, I get more phone calls from Darryl, simply because he needs to talk. He just needs to talk it out, and by the end of the conversation, "Okay, thank you," and he hangs up. And if it's a heated exchange, because it's a very, very deep-seated emotion, when we've resolved it, we've resolved it. And we're done, and we move on, and we're friends, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know that Darryl has had a supervisor like that, and he has bashed with many of his supervisors because they don't understand that concept about it. That's how he operates, he, high emotion, high energy, but this isn't personal, and when I'm done, I'm done, and don't make it personal on your end. And I I I love that, and I very much appreciated those exchanges.
And so, so you can imagine the clash from, "I value highly the human element and the human engagement," to, "We're just making a decision here," and and or, you know, and so, how do you bring those two worlds together, and it's incumbent upon the parties in those elements, again, I guess, to remove some of your own filters and then put some of, understand, okay, if I need to communicate with this person, maybe I do need to be aware of that human element, just a little bit more than than I'm used to, and I think those are the, that that's where this whole dynamic becomes fascinating.
And I've been working on it for some, but you can't change it, like, some people wanna change who you are, you can't change it, you can, you can know what your weaknesses are and work on those, but you are who you are.
I think that's a fascinating thing about the natural versus the adaptive.
And that's the place where, like Matt says, we need to maybe filter a few things, like, you know, if if we're gonna work as a team, everybody's gotta give a little.
Yeah.
You say you can't change your personality, your basic personality I tend to agree with, but you can put some filters in place that makes it easier to work with other people.
For sure.
We all can.
On both ends.
Yeah, we all can.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just have an unrelated question, both Tracy and Darryl have said they process through talking. How many of you that that you think that's true of?
No.
Not me.
Not me.
How many times have I said, "I need to go walk, I need to go pace?"
Think, I'm just curious.
Are we the only talkers? Janice?
Janice is a talker.
But I don't process talking.
No, but you asked- Really good question.
Thank you. I process at three o'clock in the morning, I have a little place by my bed with a pad and I hate that.
Tracy and Darryl tie for hot.
We're gonna call each other for hot.
We'll leave you guys out.
We're gonna talk.
All right, thank you, Darryl, fascinating. All right, Anthony.
All right. Thanks for putting our personalities on public record.
Well, I think it's important that the public knows how we operate with each other.
I think they already are, Darryl.
Yeah.
So that's me, high S.
Ah, okay, yeah.
I don't know.
And then the adaptive.
What's interesting is how low the S goes on adaptive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a big contrast.
So that I do that in private, but then-
Question is, do you try to manipulate the test?
So you're very much a different person in private, then?
I did, I did not manipulate the test, but as I went through it, I thought, oh, yeah, okay, so if you do this, that's what they're trying to, I did think about it. So, let's see, and I like this map here, because it shows, let's see if I can zoom out a little bit, 'cause it has the extrovert at the top.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And introvert, so it goes both directions. On the people side, introvert and extrovert in e- almost equal measure, so, I don't know, I thought that was, I thought that was an interesting way of representing it. Um, let's see, I'll do it back there. Hold reserve here. So under the I, uh, generally speaking, you find people warm, you can be extremely persuasive, express or talk about your emotions openly, you like meeting new people and easily interact, no one is a stranger, you enjoy opportunities to motivate others. And the natural is eighty-one, the adaptive is sixty-seven, so that, um, and then on the S, you're a team player, increasing sense of urgency, um, in the midst of chaos or high tensions, you're usually very cool and calm and serene, or at least perceived as such on the outside.
So are you not, really?
No, I think I am, but, um, you're always willing to help out in a pressure situation with people if you don't really want to.
Have you ever thought about being a superintendent?
Hey, you have perfect CEO.
Patient in working with a wide variety of people, desire a high level of structure and order.
Where was your D?
That was the S. The D was low, the D was low, um, it was twenty-one, twenty-five.
Interesting.
Modest in your approach with others.
More decisive when people are watching you.
Yeah, yeah. Only want to make decisions with a great deal of detail and awareness of outcomes and impact. So, it's interesting.
Thoughts on Anthony?
Well, I see, oh, all, very true.
I think he's right on.
High S, I think that's significant, a high S, it's a high, I mean, that's, you have, there are a lot of moving parts in this organization, and to have someone who is such a high stabilizer is such a significant thing. Cautious, decisive, but stabilizing.
So, what what were some of the things of how to communicate?
Oh, is that on the I team?
Yeah.
Let's see, um, put details in writing, outline individual tasks and responsibilities, things to avoid, I thought this was interesting. Don't offer assurances and guarantees you can't fulfill. And I can hear my voice talking to people, saying, "Where did you hear that? How do you know that that's what's going on over there? Do you, did you hear that from them, or did they tell you they heard that from someone else? Um, it says, "Don't stick too rigidly to the agenda," which surprised me, 'cause we keep going, we've worked pretty hard at that, but, "Don't offer assurances and guarantees you can't fulfill," sorry. Be certain all decision points have reached closure and action plans are the result. Don't leave decisions hanging in the air. And I think, again, I heard my voice saying, "Okay, but what is, so what are we doing with that, what does that mean?" 'Cause we talk, you know, we process and talk about stuff, and, you know, in board meetings, and that's part of the clarity I was talking about, where now we say, "Okay, but what, do you have the information you need?" That, I've always appreciated that question. Do you have the information you need to go forward? And that speaks to to this, based on the report for me, because I wanna know what, I I want solidified what's expected after the discussion. So.
Thoughts on Anthony?
I think one of the tipping things for me in choosing Anthony as a superintendent was the ability to push and receive in a very, very balanced way. Um, I don't want a superintendent that just sits back and listens to whatever you want, I just, I dread a superintendent who will just take marching orders without saying, "Here's something you need to see from my perspective." Um, and Anthony has always been, "Some things for you to consider, here's something you need to consider," but then when a decision is made-
Okay.
-we'll move forward. And that was a very, for me, that personality is exactly what I was looking for, was that, "Please tell us, from your perspective, how you see this? What are we not seeing? What are the mistakes that we're gonna make? What's down the road that this decision is gonna impact?" And then, when a decision is made, move forward. And I think that is very indicative of that ability.
Anyone else?
I just think that, like, during the negotiation process with Anthony, I see a different side, and we're able to go back and forth, and what do you think and what do I think, and it's just a really cool dynamic, and it's just like exactly what you were saying, that they're giving the information, but then also receiving, it's just, I think, in negotiation process with you, that's where I learned that the very most. Not to say that in other situations, we haven't been able to have that, but those can get to be pretty intense, you know, when we're having those conversations, it's, I love it. It helps me to learn and grow, and I hope that my insight helps you to learn and grow.
Janice, you ready?
Uh, I need to say something first.
Oh, please.
Um, the thing I appreciate most about Anthony, I think, is the fact of, uh, his ability to relate to all kinds of people, and how he listens, and he analyzes, and then, you know, comes up with some, you think, maybe he's not even listening sometimes, you know, but I know he is, and I know he's processing. And how he relates to all kinds of people, all ages of people, is amazing to me.
But he can put shades on in a leather jacket and entertain a group of high school seniors, that's impressive.
All right, Janice, show us your chart.
Oh, my heavens. Oh, my heavens. Now, what do they say? Full disclosure, my father is a PhD in educational psych, and my daughter is a PhD in educational psych, and I've taken thousands of these. So, yes, I thought about manipulating it. And I worried that I would unconsciously manipulate it because I've taken thousands of them. So, uh, I don't disagree with anything that this says, um, decisive, I'm not very decisive.
Are you sure?
I, I can be very decisive, don't annoy me, that's when I become decisive. Um, and as the mother of a lot of children and a lot of high school students, if you get on my carpet and annoy me, I'm decisive, but other than that, I don't have a need to be decisive. Um, says you like standardized controls, you can depend heavily on others to make decisions, you're considered modest in your approach, you tend to be peaceful and avoid confrontation, you are considered quiet in team settings, and I actually cultivate quiet because I have a hot temper, and I have not used it for a lot of years, um, but I have to work at it.
You have a hot temper?
Oh, man.
That surprises me.
Uh, you should have seen me the day that my, um, drug addict high son came after his brother with a knife. Uh, if you unleash my temper, you got trouble. And he finally fainted, so that was, I won. Um, but you have to be pretty far, pretty far to get that temper anymore. Interactive, um, you suffer from a fair amount of procrastination, especially if the task required too many details, amen, I hate details, that's why I trust Matt and Tracy, I don't, I hate the book. Uh, you tend to not be very organized, I'm not, I'm a big picture, not a small picture. You talk about your emotions openly, um, generally pe- speaking, people like you, um, you can be impulsive about making decisions, and I am all rippering when it comes to that, which drives my husband crazy. Cautious, you possess good thinking, critical skills, you expect a high quality of accuracy, you're systematic, um, you tend to approche- approach new ideas with suspicion and caution, you have a strong preference for established rules, and you're bottom-line oriented person who dislikes fluff, that is really true, I think, tissue-washing. Stabilizing, um, you're not good at letting things go, and boy, that's the truth, um, I can hold a grudge, I have to work not to. And that's really awkward in a marriage. My husband can't remember anything five minutes, and I remember everything from nineteen seventy-two, so we work toward that. Uh, you require some time to adjust to change, that's true, I have to have some time to think through it. Um, it says increasing your sense of urgency could benefit your performance. It, I have long believed that if, uh, there's not blood, we can take the time to figure it out, which drives people crazy. Um, you're loyal, um, that's most of it, I think, and I think mostly it's pretty true, I don't have much, uh, I don't have real strong adaptive behaviors, because I'm quiet, I don't have to create adaptive behaviors.
Your adaptive I is fascinating.
Mm-hmm. Because?
I'm not, just how strong the natural I is, but then when you, you're on display, your adaptive in that area shrinks so dramatically.
I would see that a lot when you were president and we were in the small room, a group that you loved and interacted, you were very casual, very comfortable, and then we moved into the public room and you attend some.
That's- Yep, probably true. I, um-
You were much more comfortable and casual and interactive in the small, little group with us that you knew versus the large public.
Yeah, I don't like large groups, I never have, which is why I don't go to a lot of concerts.
I'll get you to one, one of these days.
I've been to a couple.
So, speaking in church, love it or hate it?
Um, I, I am anxious when I speak in church that I say the right thing, I am not nervous. In a forum where it matters, I don't wanna say the wrong thing. So, I am not, I choose to be quiet, and, um, it takes a lot of energy not to be, so why use the energy? Although, um, I really, you have a hot temper, I just don't lose it.
Have you read Twelve Angry Men?
Pardon?
Twelve Angry Men.
Uh-huh.
So that's, you know, the guy that influence everything, I mean, he sits quiet.
And listens.
But when he speaks, everyone listens, and that's how Janice is, but we know that wisdom is going to come out of her mouth when she speaks.
Wouldn't that be great?
I've said that to many people. When Janice speaks, you should just listen.
Thank you.
Because you're quiet, but when you've got something to say, you should listen.
During the boundary change process, Janice and I overlapped quite a bit. And people would come and say, "You've got to do this." And I would just, every ounce of my, I would logically say, "We can't, and here's why." And I'd present all this evidence. And Janice would just say, "Okay." And she would just listen. And then later, after all the input came in, she'd say, "Here's the right thing." And it would have saved me a whole lot of anguish if I had just listened and then made a decision later. And that's what I value of Janice. But the challenge to that is if, if the people on, on the other end of that are, are more of, "I have to talk this through," or that can be perceived as, "You didn't value..." And I've done, this is a huge hang-up between us, is I can express and get nothing back, and then a decision is made in another way. And it's like, she didn't consider a word I said. And, and that can be extremely damaging, is that quietness and that, that is like, "Well, that was a huge waste of my time to express it." Because that, her mind, the assumption is, well, her mind was already made up, and, and all I did was, was just waste my time. And didn't, she didn't value anything that I contributed to it. And that can be the, a real challenge is, in that engagement is, well, and, and understanding that, well, what's really happening is all of that is being processed.
"I choose to be quiet." That's probably the most definitive thing I've heard you say today. "I choose to be quiet." That's fascinating.
Well, I think Matt's right. He and I are on the opposite end of the perspective. And, and I know sometimes that, that it's very frustrating to people around me that I'm not giving feedback. Takes me a while to figure out how I'm feeling. But I have a temper.
But on the same, in the same light, I appreciate that in some situations because I know you've been thinking about it and analyzing in your mind, and you're going to come up with some bit of wisdom that really, that really strikes home with me. And I appreciate the fact that you, in your quiet way, point out the positive things in people. That's what I like. I, you know, you'll come up with something, "Oh, where did that come from?" But I know that you've been thinking about it, and you, you know, you appreciate something about me or, or one of the other board members, you know? So I appreciate that about you.
I think sometimes people misunderstand me because they assume that because I'm quiet, I'm not opinionated. When in fact, I'm very opinionated. I just am quiet. And, and that has caused us conflict before.
I mean, I would submit to you that you, the quick temper that you, you have rechanneled that
Yep.
Into inward energy.
I hope that's true.
That still manifests itself in very
Different ways.
Interesting ways.
Yeah. You're absolutely right.
In very positive ways. Very sentiment, very appreciative. Janice has a tendency, she'll come up and just kiss my cheek, which simply means you handled that right. And that, I think, is that inner emotion saying, "I very much appreciate what you did in there, and you handled that right. Thank you." And no words spoken?
That's what I
Just a kiss on the cheek that says, "Bryce, you did that right."
I, I agree with that. I've also been the recipient of the very damaging ways in which it utterly blew up a bridge in, in how it was channeled. And so it can be, it's a, it's a powerful weapon, I guess is what I
You are a strong woman.
It's a powerful weapon.
You are a strong woman.
And it is true that I'm not moderate. I'm quiet, but I'm not moderate.
Fascinating. Any other thoughts, comments about Janice?
That takes a lot to understand.
It does.
Me too.
John, let's hear it. Show us your chart.
Please be like me.
This should be interesting.
There's a color on here that's surprising. Red, please. My red is forty-two.
And your natural red is higher than
Adaptive.
Than the adaptive.
I'm not sure what to really take from that, but maybe this chart is more indicative, like, I can't really bring it up, but I pull towards task.
An accountant? Really?
I do like to talk things out, but it's, I'm not, I'm not really interactive about it. But I'm looking for information. I'm, I'm looking for the logic behind it. And that's, I love talking things out for that reason because I do like to process and talk. And I talk a long run the phone. It's a, it's a long conversation.
It's always five minutes. An hour later.
But I like to process that way. But it, but it really comes down to tasks a lot of time.
You're not interested.
So let's see, what was that page name? You still have page numbers on it, which is bothering me. That's part of my
That's what it says at the bottom.
I'm, I'm shocked you haven't gone through a number though.
Reprinted it.
So effectively communicate with John accurately, realistic, don't overinflate. Find areas of common interest involvement. If you agree, but you have to follow through and do what you say you'll do. Provide assurances about inputs and decisions. Do your homework because others will have already done their share of it. Approach issues in a straightforward, direct, and factual way. Make an organized appeal for support and contributions. So what I, what I get from all that is just logic. I need to see the logic behind it.
The one jump, that jumped out at me is, what's the, say the provide assurances?
Provide assurances about input and decisions.
I, I, it is, it has fascinated me in my discussions with John that when, when I say to him, "We will own this." You know, "We as a board will own this part." How freeing that appears to John. That assurance that, "We have your, we're back." You know, "You're not going to be put out on an island on this decision." How, how empowering that seems to be to John, to, to get those kinds of assurances from, from us that
You can almost visibly see it.
Yes.
In his demeanor.
Yes. Yeah, I would agree, yeah. That, that, that you're, and that, and then that, on the, provide assurances on inputs. I think you, you'll always notice, he's, he's always hesitant to, to jump in. And what I think that is, is are, are we accepting of what he's going to be contributing? And are we?
Can I interrupt you just for a second?
Yeah?
Are you the group of the reservation?
I don't know.
Yes.
Okay. I was, I was going to say, you're going to get kicked out. But we didn't know you were coming this service.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, the Marson is that guy right there.
Okay, I just
Thank you.
And all of his caveats, and all of his, you know? When you put down a document and he has twenty-six caveats to say, "I might be wrong."
I want all the information.
You want them all covered.
Right. I, I want to know the, I want people to know the ramifications, the pitfalls, the, not just the, the hopes and dreams, but, okay, that this is what
This could happen.
I want, I want those kind of things known before decisions made. And I, I don't feel like that's to cover my own facts. I, I thought that's because I want a good decision made. I want everybody to know before we
That's why we trust you, John, because you don't hide things. You tell the truth.
Things to avoid. Don't leave an idea or plan without backup support.
Yep.
Don't rush the issue in decision-making. Don't offer assurances and guarantees you can't fulfill. Don't use unreliable evidence or testimony.
That doesn't surprise me.
There's an example I could bring up, but I won't.
I'm thinking of cabinet meeting a lot, right?
Don't be unrealistic with deadlines. I, I don't like the rush. And, and to me, that's, I see, I see travel as part of that, right? A lot of people, they like to travel, just go, 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 go. And I'm part of me thinking like, wait a minute. Here's what can happen along the way. You've got to build in, build in some cushion of time. But don't push too hard. Don't manipulate or bully others into agreeing. But I, I was shocked at the red. And maybe that's because every, I don't know, I don't know why. I, I get hit with a ton of issues every day.
But a lot of those issues, when, when you've hit that, "This is the right thing to do," then there's no reason to delay the decision at all. Let's go now. This is the right thing. Let's do it now. It's just, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's, the way that John analyzes things, once he gets things figured out, then he feels a responsibility to act on that information.
Yeah.
And so if he says, "I got all this information. You told me all this stuff, and now we're not doing anything about it? We've got to do something about this."
That's the red.
I think is the red. So it's, it's a positive. It's a positive. It's taking action. Once the evidence is there, you want to do something about it. Solve it, address it.
And, and he wants to inform. He wants to inform people, the proper, people who are involved. He wants them to know.
The red didn't surprise me as much yesterday when I first saw it, until here, seeing everybody else's. So I'm kind of, so Darryl's got a higher red. And I'm guessing Bryce is going to have a higher red. I'm a senior here, but I don't know about anyone else.
Did you see my low red?
Red is not bad. But, but sometimes people should think of it. It, right, it isn't bad. It's just surprised me.
I was, I was, I'm a low, I'm a low D.
But I value ID.
Yeah. Yeah.
I wish I was more so.
I, that number doesn't surprise me because just like they said.
What's the number?
Forty-one.
So we're equal on red.
Yeah.
However, his adaptive and his actual, I was saying.
Yeah. My adaptive, all of my adaptives are subdued, which didn't surprise me. I don't think that would be, that is me.
Could use that.
But when I'm in a
I'm naturally more quiet than I am in color.
Yeah, the, the smaller the group, the more you're, yeah.
The more I feel free to express.
Yeah.
And so you'll find I will express less in board meetings than personally one-on-one or even in committee meetings, or other influences that lack the ala there.
Now, that's fascinating. Any other thoughts about John? Very insightful.
Merely loyal.
Yep. All right, Jen, you ready?
All right.
I know exactly what, yep. You just didn't feel it. Yep.
So this, this, this D kind of surprised me that the adaptive was higher than the natural. Does that strike anybody? Can anybody give me some insight?
Oh, yeah, that is interesting. I guess for most people, it's the other way around.
Yeah. So like John and Anthony said, this graph spoke a lot of volume to me because I've always thought of myself as more of an extrovert than this kind of shows me. I'm not super, it's not super higher, but I am more of an introvert than I thought. But I think that my confidence makes me more of an introvert than I would like to be. So I can kind of see how that is. There was a statement in here, and now I'm going to try and find it. It really kind of pinpointed for me unpredictability for me is very uncomfortable. Emotion unpredictable, unpredictability is really uncomfortable for me. Situational, anything like that, environmental, environmental. And so sometimes when somebody says, "This is, we've got a plan and this is what's happening, and the plan needs to change," my automatic response will probably most likely be, "No." If you give me just a few minutes, then I start thinking, and I'm like, "Wait a minute. I can make that work." You know what I mean? But my first response, because I'm so, "These are the things that need to happen." That's where I was talking about. My, probably one of my biggest strengths, but my biggest weaknesses is my planning because I do plan things out. And when that kind of gets, if something gets in the way, then I hurt feelings. I do. I've hurt feelings before. Or I just assume that people aren't planning, so I'll start planning over them. So that, just, but most, out of any, anything that's unpredictable, emotional, unpredictable, predictability in environments makes me very uncomfortable. So
Which I think is why the interactive is higher, because you would rather take control of the situation. You would rather be in control of the situation than be a, a party to it. So when the, when the public is there, when others are there, you have a tendency to take more control than allow someone else to, to have the control of the moment. I've noticed that in my interactions, in our committees.
Yeah. So on page nineteen, basically the same as Anthony, outline individual tasks and responsibility in writing. I remember the, the day of my wedding. My uncles threw away my list. And I was live. I just lived my day. I like to live. Offer input on how to make ideas become reality. Provide testimonials for people and enforce confidence. Break the ice with a brief personal comment. And I do like that. I feel like I can interact with somebody even in a business setting if I can have just that comment, that back and forth. If you say you're going to do something, do it. I would say in the past year, this is my biggest strife because that I've had a lot of people say that they were going to do something in my call-up here. Allow time to verify the issues and potential outcomes. Be certain that information you have is credible. And then things to avoid, I would say, and this is actually the very bottom one, but this is the top one for me, is don't threaten position or power, or with position or power. Don't rush into business or agenda items. Provide some time to break the ice. Don't be vague about what's expected. Don't leave things up in the air or to work out by chance. Don't be unreliable evidence or testimonials, or don't use unreliable evidence or testimonials. Sorry. Don't be domineering or demanding. That's a big one for me. I would say that. I would say that out of this list, that would be the second. Don't leave decisions hanging in the air. Be certain. All decisions planned, points have reached closure, and action plans are resolved. There was one in here that says that I don't like change. And when I first read it, I thought, no, that's not me. I can change, like, I can adapt with people easily. Physicians at work, they change as teams all the time, and I, I don't really get emotional about that. I don't have issue with that. But then I was like, wait a minute, but then I just talked about unpredictability is such a huge thing for me. So, I don't know, I think that there's a, been a quote to that, but I don't know.
That's fascinating.
It was very interesting to read that.
Thoughts on Jen, thoughts on working with and around Jen?
I'm glad you like lists and detail, because that's an enigma to me. I don't even know how to get there, and it's very reassuring to me when I work with you, that you've taken care of that stuff, because I know.
And you have a unique combination of being focused on the list, but wanting to hear from people and being very concerned about how things affect individuals. And that's a great combination that doesn't always go together, so it's...
A detailed, a detailed people person.
A detailed people person, exactly. There's, sometimes people tip too far one way or the other, and you're chocolate and peanut butter. Two great tastes that taste great together.
Yeah, let's put it on the thing I've always liked, is that you're just balanced, spiritually balanced perspective on things.
That's why the S doesn't surprise me at all on you, because I really think that you're very conscious of keeping things stabilized and upright. And if it starts to tip, you'll do what you can to bring it back to balance.
You think about all the things I've asked. All the B C D E, you have a list for all of those, so you know how to take an idea and actually make it work.
So that's why sometimes when questions are asked of me, I, although I'm very regimented, I still have to take time to think about it. I'm not the type of person that, like with Matt, you and I have a conversation and you're very quick to answer the questions and you like the answers, and I, I can't give that to you. And so I feel very withdrawn and no confidence.
Well, and I was just thinking, as I, as I, I'm just, in each of these, it's like, okay, where have I just gone wrong? Not, you know, in, in that interaction, and it's just clearly, I mean, you talk about lists and the desire, and then the, the just need to not have, for things to be predictable. And it's like, I can, I can mirror multiple conversations that I had, that, that I could feel you going, as we're talking, you're going down these, that, that you had planned everything that needed to be said. And, and instead of letting that just work through the plan, I would just, okay, she's on step two, I'm gonna insert and blow that, that planned conversation up. And then, and knowing that, it's like, for all intents and purposes, at that very point, we should have just ended the conversation because there was not gonna be, I blew that up. Does that make sense? And, and so it's kind of like, no, there's a very structured, and, and by inserting in that, it's introducing that unpredictability to this, that is just not going to be a healthy environment to have a meaningful dialogue. Yeah. Anyone else on Jen?
Can I see your high D? I'm kind of curious about this one, because something I'm noticing, before you show it to me, is all the teachers had a high I.
My I was sixty-seven, sixty.
That's what mine was exactly.
Oh, was it? And yours? Oh, yeah.
My interactive I, when you put me in a classroom.
Yeah, that's, and so Jen's I being a little higher was interesting to me because she's not my trade in the teacher.
And hasn't?
No, but not by trade, but I feel that just in my upbringing, I had to be the teacher. Because her parents are...
There it is.
I had to teach and guide and show. I had to teach people how to interact with my parents, and I had to teach my parents how to interact with people.
That's interesting. That's interesting.
Which really brings us to Malcolm Gladwell's book.
All right, here's mine.
I would've thought that your high, um, nat, or, yeah, natural would be higher.
On the I?
On the I.
On the I? I'm a lot quieter on my own. I, my whole life, I have been on display. I'm a student body president in high school, I'm a teacher, my whole life. I live my life in the adaptive, more than in the natural. And then when everyone goes away and it's just me, it's, it's different.
So what's your square thing?
Here's my square.
Interesting.
Interesting. Right in the middle.
Wow, that is very interesting.
Right in the middle. A deep thinker.
Which helps you relate to it.
A deep thinker who loves teaching and loves being with people and loves interacting, and, yeah. So here are some of the phrases that fascinated me. "You are a calculated risk taker, but only after you have had sufficient time to consider all potential outcomes. You like to think things through before acting. It is important to have some time to evaluate options before acting. You are an influen, you are influential and talkative. You are talkative and express your opinions freely. Sometimes you can express your opinion too much. Flexible to change your new ideas, stabilize others on a team. You think it is important to follow established procedures and processes. You can accept change, but you require a good argument for it first. Excellent at gathering detailed information and examples. Contentious, or conscientious in delivering..."
That was a slip.
"...in delivering high levels of detail. When you disagree, you may express your resistance in a passive-aggressive manner. My natural style, you have a large knowledge base and a continuing appetite to learn more. A high degree of competency, a competence in your area of expertise. You tend to verb, to be verbal and articulate about, articulate about many different topics and issues. Optimistic and demonstrate high personal standards. Persuade others by demonstrating personal competence. You handle people with patience, you have a high technical competence. You want to be seen as an easy person to be around. Motivated by prompting ideas and generating enthusiasm in others. Generate team involvement through friendly conversation and gentle persuasion. Ability to handle pressing problems in a casual manner but still get the problem solved. Ideas to be, to communicate with me. Be certain that individual responsibilities are clear and there are no ambiguities. I've been asking for clarity between the board and the superintendent from the day I got here. Ask for input regarding people and specific assignments. Offer input on how to make the ideas become reality. Break the ice with a brief, brief personal comment. Assure others that there won't be surprises. Provide a specific step-by-step timetable with names and responsibilities. Allow time to verify the issues and potential outcomes. Don't push too hard. Rush the issues or the decision-making process. Be vague about what's expected. Don't use someone else's opinion as evidence. Don't offer assurances and guarantees you can't fulfill. Don't offer promises you can't keep. And don't leave decisions hanging in the air.
What do you think about that?
I think that's fairly accurate. I, I try to be a, a deep thinker, but very personable. My whole life is about inspiring others. I do, I, I teach in an interesting way. It's not all about facts and figures. It's about connections and patterns and application and making life better for you, not just here's the facts and the figures. It's not a logical approach, and so I think that's why it's a little bit more balanced in terms of people and thoughts. I'm very logical, but I'm very, I could not be an accountant. I couldn't sit in a desk. Neither could I. I have to be around people. I have to, my job has to be interacting and inspiring and problem-solving and making life better for people. That's my core, so.
But you're not just a, you're not just people, but you're about getting it done too.
Getting people doing the right things and...
Yeah. You don't say things people want to hear. You say things people need to hear.
I try to get to the heart of an issue. What's interesting is the demonstrated competency. It's been interesting to watch. You can almost see the point at which you've finally done your homework on an issue, because you do become much more engaged in the conversation and, and in, in, and bringing an opinion to, to the matter. It's been interesting to watch that, that evolution on, you know, and it's fascinating when it circles around a policy. When something's first introduced, you can almost see that, okay, he's not very familiar with this right now. And then you can see the point at which, okay, he, he dug into this one, because all of a sudden, it's, you're very much a part of the, and so, understanding that is, there's never, it's not a disinterest in a top, it's, okay, and until he feels like he's got this, he's gonna let everyone else run with this. But the moment he's done that, he's gonna step in and be very much a part of this and lead out on that.
Another combination, like I was saying with Jen, is that you do the deep thinking, but you're able to convey it really well. Some people are deep thinkers that can never communicate it, and you're able to convey it in a way that, where people can hold on to it, latch on to it, and connect their own emotions to it very effectively. So you have that combination.
And, and that's where, I mean, I've found very much that, that if, if I feel strongly about an idea, I'm gonna talk to Bryce about it and give him all of the information and get him to, give him the time to study it and buy in. And, and the moment I know he's bought in, I know he's gonna go champion it. And, and that, for someone who understands their ability to communicate is limit, it is extremely empowering to know that I have somebody that I can, and it's not that he's buying everything I'm selling, there's gonna be discussion. But, but I know if I can make that, that he'll, he'll champion the right, the ideas that he feels strongly in, and it's very empowering. Okay, this was great, very helpful, I think. Let's take a break.